At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I will start with a pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Supervisor Corporal, can you please call roll?
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Township Manager Ms. Tulley Coles, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer, we have Mr. Williams here, Chief of Police Joseph Barnarelli, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Finance Mega Bandal Dangarli, sorry, Superintendent of Public Works Eric Gottenmeyer, Chief of Fire and Emergency Services Mark Antezeski.
Thank you. For announcement, our next Board of Supervisors meeting is scheduled for March 6, 2023 at 7:00 PM. At this time, I'd like Ms. Tulley Coles is going to come to the podium.
Okay, there we go. So, I am really happy to be here. Today's swearing-in ceremony marks an important milestone in a collaborative effort that began two years ago when the Board of Supervisors and the four volunteer fire companies that serve Middletown, Parkland, Pendell, Langhorn Middletown, and William Penn, initiated the process to start assessing fire services in Middletown Township. The process to do this study took place over a six-month period in 2021 and led to the development of a strategic plan in 2022. A critical takeaway from this study was the recommendation that the township and the volunteer fire companies work collaboratively toward the development of a combination fire department where both paid and volunteer firefighters work together as part of one unified structure. Ten months ago, representatives from all the stakeholder groups met in this room, rolled up their sleeves, and addressed this recommendation, spending a full day assisting in the development of a strategic plan that would identify the necessary steps to move forward. Since then, the chiefs and presidents of the four fire companies, the elected officials, and the administrative staff have worked tirelessly to move through the steps identified in the strategic plan. I'd like to recognize Don Harris, our interim director, who has been working steadfastly over the last year to work with both the fire companies and the township team to move forward in this process. Don is going to remain with us for a few months, but we are forever grateful for the service that Don has given to our community. So, the development of a job description and the recruitment process was a collaborative effort. It led to posting for this position back in November. And the reason we're all here tonight, and it is amazing to see the representation from all four fire companies, so basically, we had a nationwide recruitment process that ended with 20 qualified, strong candidates. We narrowed the field to six. Those six individuals were first vetted via Zoom and telephone, and then we interviewed six, the same six individuals, in a panel interview process that included either the chief or assistant chief of each of the four fire companies, interim director Don Harris, Nick Valla, and myself. That led to two finalists. Two finalists were then brought back for an intensive, day-long interview where they were given the opportunity to engage with all four fire companies on their own turf at their stations. They also had an interview with two board members and myself. They were able to meet with the career crew, and it was, it was a really intense, long process. The wonderful thing, at the conclusion of that day, it was unanimous. Mark Antezeski, he was, he was our guy. He was the ideal candidate for the job. He was the ideal candidate for Middletown, described by some of the people in the process as a fireman's fireman. He is a veteran of fire services, and he brings to us extensive leadership. He served most recently as the Chief of Fire District 9 in Hamilton Township, New Jersey, where he saw a department go from volunteer and transition gradually to combination. He is a veteran of the United States Air Force, where he worked as a firefighter, fire inspector, and a crew chief. He has a commitment to professional development, including Bachelors in Science in Fire Service from the University of Maryland. He holds a Master's Degree from Columbia Southern University, and he also attended the Executive Fire Officer Program through the National Fire Academy. And he holds many certifications. In addition to what is really a distinguished career, he is also a teacher. He's an instructor at Mercer County Fire Academy, and he teaches with the New Jersey State Police. I am thrilled to welcome Chief Antezeski and his wife Karen to our community and to the Middletown Township team. And so, Chief, would you please come forward for your ceremonial swearing-in before the Board of Supervisors?
Will you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Mark Antezeski.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
The laws and
The Constitution.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances of Middletown Township
And the ordinances of Middletown Township.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
Perform the duties of Middletown Township Chief of Fire and Emergency Services
Perform the duties of Chief of Emergency, of Fire and Emergency Services.
With duty, honor, and fidelity.
With duty, honor, and fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully you can hear me. I don't know if this is taped or whatever, so I'll use the mic. Just a few words real quick. First, it's an honor and privilege to be accepted to this position. I know that everything that Ms. Stephanie said about the process was very interesting, was intriguing to me. It involved all the departments, it involved the elected officials, the administration, and the career staff. I thought that was a very well-done thing, and I was really impressed on the way that was handled. And again, I really appreciate me going through that selection process and being, being able to represent you here today. I don't take this role as the first career fire chief in this department lightly. I understand that the township, the chiefs, the presidents, the career staff, everyone came together to make this happen. And this is an important role. It's, it really weighs on my heart to know that you entrusted me to try to bring this together, to make one large organization that provides a great service to the community. So, believe me, being the first, it really hits home with me, and I understand how important it is, and I appreciate you selecting me. And I'm excited to get to work. I've already met with the chiefs, the career staff, obviously, a lot of the department heads within the township. We have a lot of meetings set up with mutual aid chiefs and other stakeholders in the community, 911 center, etc. So, I'm looking forward to meeting those folks and working with all them. And again, my biggest thing is just working together. It seems like that has been the, the thread through all the interview process, of all the departments coming together and working as a true combination department. And I'm really excited to move forward that. And again, I can't say enough how privileged and honored and humbled I am to be selected for this position. So, thank you very much, and I hope we can all work together and make a great organization here. Thank you.
We'd also like to invite the representatives from the fire companies to have a group picture with the board and Chief Antezeski. So, come on up. We'll squeeze up here. We'll get
We're going to take a two-minute recess, so those of you who want to clear out can feel free.
Take some food with you on your way out.
Hi, my name's Kaia Page. I live at 190 Red Rose Drive in Levittown. I came to speak with you guys tonight. I have written, all of you, numerous emails, including Jim, about our neighbor at 185 Red Rose. Things were passed almost two years ago that gave him working hours of nine to seven across the street. He is not supposed to run a home repair, auto repair shop, and sell cars out of his home, but that's what he and his employees do every single day. They detail them. He has painted a new Mustang in his paint bay down there, which I provided pictures of. He's setting up a paint bay. It's cancerous to all of us. Maybe something should be done. But I'm told every time Jim goes out, he's not doing anything illegal. He's doing things that are legal, clearly. He has put up posts and plastic tarp all around his property down there where you can't see in. I can still see for where I am because I'm on the hill. He sits and guns his engine all day long, which if you call the police, they say, "We can't do anything because, you know, we don't have a thing that measures the noise. Only, I don't know, Sandy has it." And supposedly, you guys won't do anything about it because they can just say it wasn't calibrated right. But I can show you a video, or play a video if you guys want to hear him gunning his engine. But it's turned into the point where the complaints are going unheard. Nothing is being done. If he gets a violation, he has 30 days to deal, you know, to deal with it. He sold the car by then. He's on to the next one. But it reached a whole new level in January, because now his girlfriend shows up at our home at 9:30 at night threatening us, threatening a township police officer. We called the police. They came out. We told them, we would give them the video the next day. I've since called two different officers, the officer that showed up that night, and Officer Hardy, who usually deals with things in our area. Neither have answered me whatsoever. So, I just, I'm here to say, at what point is something done? Like, are you guys going to wait until one of us is killed over the fact of the things that he's doing across the street? Because she clearly said to me, "Stop turning them in," her and her boyfriend. Like, I mean, it's a problem. We were in bed. And thank goodness, we have a major security system, a commercial security system, because he has put up infrared lights to try to block us. And my security system, because it's commercial, sees right past it. So, but it blocks out my ring. But I mean, he's gone to great lengths to try to hide what he does and try to keep us quiet. Like I said, you know, he's threatened me. The police are aware of the horrible names he says. I'm not even going to say them here because they're too horrific. But, you know, like I said, now I have his girlfriend showing up at my house, and you can't even get a police officer to come back. And I stopped writing Jim because nothing gets done. I mean, seriously, if a violation is given, he has 30 days to stop doing that with that particular thing. He is now closed his shop down temporarily, has been for months now, because there's no reason for him to work out of his shop in Bristol, because he does every single thing at home. On Mondays, he goes to the auction and gets cars. He takes his flatbed out. He brings them back. He stops and unloads them because he can't come in with them on his flatbed. So, he stops and unloads them, and then him and his employees drive them into the house and drive them down below. Like, can I bring five, six cars and pack them, just park them wherever in my yard? He hauls in more and more stone to bring more and more cars. I've told Jim that as well. It's all in emails. Mike, I've sent them to you. Anna, I've sent them to you. Stephanie, I've sent them to you. What can be done? I'm going tomorrow night to the zoning hearing board. I'm going to ask them the same thing. Something has to stop. You have to stop him and maybe stop his girlfriend, too. Like, I'm asking for you guys' help. Can you please tell me what can be done? Because I'm truly at my wit's end.
If I could just jump in, there is no pending zoning hearing tomorrow related to this property.
Oh, it's, it's not, but you can't have public comment at a zoning hearing board?
It is not. It is like a judicial hearing. There is no public comment for those items that are not scheduled. But just, excuse me? The, I'm just talking about the zoning hearing board.
Right. When is there one where we can have public comment?
The one you're at right now.
The zoning hearing board. They're the ones who gave him the list of things he could do.
So, maybe I can explain to the board. So, this neighbor across the street from Ms. Page went to the zoning hearing board and received relief and has a list of conditions for his approval. Jim Ennis is aware. We have been called out there numerous times. He is not to be painting on the property. He is not to be bringing
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
There, I don't have the list of conditions in front of me, but painting is one thing he is not supposed to be doing on the property. He is not supposed to be selling cars from the property. We continue to monitor. I mean, obviously, if you're saying that painting just took place, we can certainly go out there. I can't speak to whatever threatening, I can't speak to whatever threatening issues may have happened related to the police department, but I can just let the board and those who are watching, we have not been able to find him in violation of any of the conditions of that zoning hearing board approval. We continue to look at it.
Are you kidding me?
Jim, do you have anything to add?
How many emails have I sent showing you pictures? I take picture after picture. It's well after the hours he's supposed to be working. That right there is a violation.
After, I guess it's been a couple of months now, when I actually met with Bob at length at his property and talked to Holly at his property, walked around the entire site of his property, and discussed matters that were raised. And at the time, I did not identify any violation. Prior to that, the only violation that was clear was when Kaia did send a picture of a man performing work, doing detailing on the RV, and told the man to stop, and within 25 hours, the man stopped.
Well, that's not true. I have a week's worth of video of him every day, which I've sent you pictures, day after day after day of him doing it. And I understand he has 30 days. But let me ask you this. I sent you pictures of him hauling stone down there. We can't just haul in stone and dump it on our properties. The other thing, like I said, he put up all these posts, and instead of putting a fence up, he put tarp up so he can go around the system. He understands how to work the system. But can I do that on my property? Can I put up posts and put tarp up all over everywhere? I can't. Can I park all these cars all over my property? I can't. Why are the rules different for him?
I just want to assure everyone watching and the board that we respond to every complaint that comes into us related to this property.
Yeah. We're going to do an investigation.
It is a severe neighbor dispute.
It's not a neighbor dispute, Stephanie. It's not. It's clear violations.
Still, go out and review every complaint. If we identify a violation of the zoning hearing, we will issue a violation notice. Jim has already done that. When he sees something, he notifies. I can assure you that we'll stay on top of it. We will keep monitoring it.
Can you have the post with all the tarp?
I believe I even emailed you about this matter when I was out to his property. He did say he was going to be working on getting a fence contractor to make that fenced tarp into compliance. I told him I'd give him till about early spring to work on the matter.
Yeah, it's early spring. You know, I mean, like, let's get into the stone. How much stone can you haul down there? Do you understand it's right on the greenbelt? Like, everything that he does down there, all the engine stuff that he does, power washing engines, it all drains just by natural runoff right into our creek. Like, that's disgusting. It should be, like, illegal. Like, that's a natural-fed spring for our creek.
We haven't identified any environmental violation at the property.
So, have you checked underneath the tow truck where it leaks oil constantly? Because every time it rains, all that runs to the creek. And the tow truck constantly leaks, constantly.
Isn't part of the issue that it's hard to, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, either, either, Jim, that it's hard to kind of make a case once they receive these variances from the zoning board?
Well, I mean, at this point, we can enforce the conditions of the zoning variance. So, he's been granted permission to do some things, but he has restrictions for things he cannot do. And so, we can enforce those restrictions, the conditions.
And why are we giving him grace?
But he is permitted, he, you know, he is permitted to do some things. We respond, and we have responded, and we have responded by going out there to investigate, and we have not been able to identify him being in violation of those conditions of the
You know that's a lie.
You have to go to the podium.
Yeah, you have to come up to the mic. Sorry.
And, and I have physically been out there. Jim has been out there.
My name is Kelly Weldon, 180 Red Rose Drive. I am directly across the street from this matter, from this property. What was the question? I'm sorry.
He's not in violation.
Well, he is in violation, but my thing is, is that you go out there on a scheduled meeting.
Yeah, it's always, he schedules a time to go.
Every time it's scheduled, and that place is cleaned up. There's not one employee. There's not one car lot vehicle. Right now, if you were to go out there as we speak, there are two lot vehicles out there that we watched him bring in. His one employee brought it in this week. Monday, he goes to the auctions. Wednesday, he brings them home.
Well, I, I am comfortable I am comfortable assuring you that we will go out without being scheduled.
We have been, this has blown up our Easter from day one. You go out there, you schedule a meeting, and it is cleaned up by the time Jim gets out there. And then Jim goes out, he spends an hour walking around, shooting the breeze with Bob, shakes his hand, and leaves. Nothing is ever done. It is in clear violation of the township codes. None of you would want to live next to an auto body shop. None of you would want to live next to an auto mechanic shop. It is not an LLC property. It is a residential neighborhood.
And it's against the zoning
And it is against the zoning ordinances.
Again, I am happy to schedule non, you know, I can send people out there in non-scheduled times. It's not only meetings that have been scheduled with him. Folks have gone out there to look at it in other times. But if the board would like, we can continue to monitor it, not when we have a scheduled meeting.
The problem is, it needs to
We have no, we have, there's nothing, we only want to enforce the ordinances. We really have, there's no
I get violations for things I didn't do, and you guys clearly have no problem with sending me violations. But he clearly has done things. I proved to the zoning hearing board with over 100 pictures.
Hundreds, thousands, two, this has been
I can, I can provide tons more.
Two years, we've been fighting this matter.
And he didn't come before the zoning hearing board.
The zoning hearing board is closed. He's received the approval with the conditions.
Do you understand that he put that shed in and was cited by the township? He didn't go and ask for a variance. He was forced by the township to get one.
And that's when this all started.
Yeah.
When he got spanked for that ordinance is when I was forced to get rid of my pets after 20 years.
I was forced to have to get a permit for my shed and fences that were there
This all started because he was
in 2006, and I bought the house in 2014.
As you can see, this is an enormous neighborhood dispute among
It's not a neighborhood dispute.
two sides of the street who call us on the other side constantly.
Well, there's nothing for them to call on, because I don't do anything other than take pictures of what he does.
To be as impartial as possible and enforce the zoning ordinance and enforce the conditions of the zoning hearing board.
Stephanie, have you done anything about it?
Okay, is there, is there a way we can, we
Okay, is there, is there a way we can, we can do a surprise visit?
Let me just show you what we listen to during the day.
Okay.
We're not able to translate your video in any way.
Yeah, we can't even hear it.
I can't even hear the noise.
Was it email? Then we'll be able to like hear it through email. I can't even hear what that's playing.
It's just getting ready to happen. He's moving cars at the moment. Then he's gonna gun and gun and gun. Do you know how far away I am? Jim, you know, from this picture. I'm standing on my porch. Right? Like, but nothing is done. That's a neighbor dispute? We live across the street from that. Like, it rattles our windows. Like, we should be able to live in peace. So I'm going to come to every meeting until something's done. And when can I go to the zoning hearing board and speak?
You can go and speak to, you can speak on the record at a zoning hearing related to the matter that is in front of the zoning hearing board at that time. So the hearings that are scheduled are gonna be for a side yard variance on this street and a, you know, shed on that street. That is all you can talk about. It is a quasi-judicial process where there is a stenographic record. That is not a board that just takes general comments about things. That case that you're talking about is over. That the decision was rendered, the appeal period is beyond. And now that property owner has that approval with those conditions.
But he's doing things beyond those conditions. Something has to be done about it.
We're, we're gonna send somebody out.
Can they send somebody when we call?
I can't guarantee that.
Because that doesn't happen.
Well, right, that's what I'm saying. We're gonna send somebody out as a surprise.
And then all we hear is, we're investigating. I mean, Jim, tell me, was he not in violation when they were blowing all their yard debris in the yard, in the road?
We can schedule, we will, I can assure you that we will send folks out there in an unscheduled manner.
Okay.
I sent it to you and you said the township will investigate.
We investigated, but we didn't find it to be in violation of any codes. They just blown leaves into the street. That's really all that happened.
You can't blow your yard waste into the street.
There was some leaves that were blown into the street, I would agree. And I told Holly, I-
I'm gonna send you guys that video.
And I have one additional thing for the board, because I just got a message from one of- Both our interim director of fire and our public works director have been out two times to check the creek, to monitor for environmental damage, and they have found nothing.
Thank you. But did they check the shed for paint? Did they check under his tow truck? Clearly, it leaks into the creek.
Well, we'll send somebody out.
Okay.
Again, my name is Kelly Weldon, 180 Red Rose Drive. I am not here about 185. I am here about 186, my adjacent neighbor. Mike, hello, my name is Kelly Weldon. You've had my emails delivered to you. Anna, I've also tagged you in my emails because I don't know what else to do. This is two years ongoing that I've brought this water issue, extended driveway of my neighbor, which is one foot off of my property. They extended their driveway, which is less than 10 feet from my, from my property line. And then extended that even further with gravel, okay? They parked cockeyed sideways on an angle, right up to the property line with headlights shining in all my windows. My question is, like I said, this is two years that I've been asking Jim to please take care of this matter. First, I'm sorry, it was Pat. And then now it's Jim's problem. Nothing has been done. He tells me, I'm in talks with them. They're talking to an attorney about this or about that, but yet nothing has been done. Now, back when 185 got in trouble for whatever it was he was doing, he felt that he needed to turn me in for chickens that I had for 20 years in my backyard. Funny? Not so funny, Stephanie. For 20 years, okay? Sandy knocked on my door. I received a letter and Sandy knocked on, Morgan knocked on my door that very same day. I was in violation with my chickens, my pets that I've had for 20 years. I had to get rid of them. 30 days to comply, I had. Or I would have been in violation. Is that correct? I would have been in violation. So, on day 28, Sandy Morgan shows up at my door to see if I am complying. By then, heartbrokenly, they are already gone. I did what I was supposed to do. I complied immediately. I had 30 days and I got rid of them. I did what I was supposed to do. I want to know why the seam is not for this neighbor. Why was there not a 30-day comply order out on the driveway? Or the gravel, or the extension of the driveway, or the water runoff matter? Why was there no 30 days to comply? I would love to know.
I know, Mr. Ennis.
Why, I was also told that Jim feels the need to use his discretion, is what we were told. Per resident, per address. It's at his discretion. And that's not what I was under the impression the ordinance or township rules are. What's good for one is good for the other. Am I not, am I mistaken?
Mr. Ennis, do you want to comment on the chicken and-
The chickens predate me. I think also a lot of the way that the violations were handled predate me and I would probably would have done some things differently if I was around in 2020 and 2020. Can I please talk? Thank you. But when it comes to the driveway, I don't see it as a matter that needs the direct issuance of a violation notice. The property owner neighboring, I understand that.
No codes, no permits, no variance?
But when it comes to my discretion, I do think that I will try to work with a neighbor as much as possible before it's completely unavoidable to then go ahead and issue a notice of violation. The neighbor to Kelly has not proven to me that that's what's needed right now. I've had numerous discussions with them. As I've already informed people, they are in discussions with an attorney. Especially considering the fact that the driveway expansion occurred at least since 2019. So it has been there for some time. I've had other, can I please talk, Kelly? Please let me talk. Then also, I've had no record or knew about the violation up until summer of last year. The neighbor property owner has been pretty cooperative. In fact, they might either A, go for a variance before the zoning hearing board, or B, remove the driveway for a different design of driveway that would go further into their property away from Kelly's. But they still may run into an impervious coverage issue. So right now, they're actually doing a site design as well as a coverage calculation to see if that is the case. And then if they do have to go before the zoning hearing board, they might as well just go before the zoning hearing board for the actual expansion that's been around for roughly at least 40 years. So that's, that's where we're at right now. I'm, when I say my discretion, I don't believe in issuing notice of violations. I understand that, but I've been working nicely with the neighbor property owner.
Is the way it was put. That's not professional. That's not the way the township should be run. What's good for one resident should be good for all residents, if I'm not mistaken. Is that not true? Is that not true?
We are very consistent in enforcing our codes. We have a complaint about a driveway. We have a complaint about a driveway and our zoning officer and director is working with that neighbor to correct it and/or have a zoning variance application submitted. We are not obligated to send a violation notice immediately. In fact, we often try to work with our residents to bring them into compliance before we issue a violation.
Like it was done with me as I had to get rid of the pets?
I can't talk about that because that was, I had nothing to do with that. I have no details about what happened when Mr. Banger-
Is that what you're telling me? I can go get them?
No, that's not anything related to what I just said.
If it's, if it's okay for one neighbor-
If you get, if you get the chickens and someone complains about the chickens, we're gonna come to you and say, remove the chickens.
And slap a 30-day notice on me. That is exactly what was done.
That is not always the way that it is handled. Mr. Ennis has the discretion to give a property owner the opportunity to come into compliance before a violation is issued.
Okay, Mike, when do you think approximately was the first time that you received email, email, an email from me?
Hell, I, I have no idea.
You don't?
I apologize.
How about you, Anna? How long has this honestly been going on? How long have I been tagging you in emails? This has been going on, okay, it was brought with Sandy Morgan two years ago. Brushed off. Sandy went to that neighbor. After I brought it to her attention, she came out to my home. And I explained it all to her on my property. Sandy went, knocked on their door, explained the water issue and everything else, and said to them, well, I told her to go ahead and raise her property level. How about that? Is that professional? That's what Sandy told me. She let the neighbor know. Okay? I told Kelly to go ahead and raise her property level. So it floods them out. How's that? That's kind of antagonistic, antagonistic if you ask me. Pinning one neighbor against another, you know? That's not resolving anything. And that was two years ago. And then I had Jim and Stephanie out at my house. They were out at a scheduled meeting with 185 across the street from me. And while they were there, parked in front of my home, I found it to be the good opportunity to ask Jim about the issue with my adjacent neighbor. So he was brought aware to this in July of last year. And I want to know why now that I am being adamant about getting answers and adamant about results. Am I getting, and I've only gotten two responses from him, and it's coincidentally on two township meeting nights. That's when he gets back to me. When it's a township meeting night is when I seem to hear from him. And still, nothing is done. Nothing is done. I could go on and on about the violations that are at 186 Red Rose Drive. An improper in-law suite that's put in. That was, that was stated, you read my email today, Jim, it was sent to you. That was submitted as an addition, which is now an in-law suite with a front door that aims at my bathroom. My girl's bathroom. Two bathroom windows and my daughter's bedroom. And we now have a front door that those parents come in and out, in and out, in and out 24/7. It's a front door. There's so many more violations. I just want something done about that driveway that forces water on to my property. And it's a muddy mess.
Mr. Ennis, did they give you a timeline of like, what, talking to the attorney about when they would get back to you?
So I was out of the office last week when they called. I actually called them the day. They called me back. We've been playing phone tag. But I will get some kind of response from them this week as far as confirmation on how they're pursuing. Okay.
Can you let me know as soon as you get a response?
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't have, I don't have faith in the system. I don't have faith that anything is going to be done. They, the condescending body language of Stephanie, the remarks of Jim, it's, it's condescending. It's kind of demeaning. They don't get anything done. And me, myself and Mrs. Page are made out to be these lunatic neighbors and it's some personal thing that we have. It isn't, well, it was personal the day they made me get rid of my chickens. Absolutely. Absolutely, it was personal because I did nothing to them. I was never at a meeting. But this 186 has nothing to do with that. So I don't know why he's not doing his job. I just don't understand why he's not doing his job. Why, why there has not been a variance? There was no variance to extend that driveway. There was no variance for gravel. There was no variance to extend that concrete slab that is out in front of their front door. That all, which they extended because of their impervious surface, Jim, they ran out of it. They don't have anymore. They extended it with two 12 by 12 rows of concrete things to even extend it even further.
I, I understand. We, listen, you asked me when the last time you emailed me was or the first time. I don't know.
It was not the first and it won't be the last.
Understood. And I, I admit, we are very aware of what you're talking about and we're very aware of what Kaia is talking about. So what you're telling us today is not new information. I promise you that every time we get an email, we talk to each other, we talk to Stephanie, we talk to Jim. Sometimes we talk to the chief, because I know that the chief has been out there. I've spoken to Eric, because I know that they've been out there to look at the creek. We're not ignoring it. We're absolutely involved. But you have to understand that from our perspective, we put a lot of faith and reliance in our professionals. And so when Mr. Ennis tells me that they've been out there and they've done an inspection and they haven't found violations, we believe them. Now, I understand, Kaia, what you're saying, and so I agree. We need to have somebody go out there at unscheduled, unannounced times to see if we can catch them in the act. That's always the hardest thing about this.
It's every day. It's on a daily.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna go out because I, listen, I wouldn't, if what you're saying is accurate, I wouldn't want to live across the street or next door to it either. We're gonna send somebody out there.
It's not an LLC. He's not supposed to be doing it. Today, yesterday, he had his buddy's truck up on a-
If he's running, if he's running an auto business and an auto painting business on his property and we can catch him in the act, we're gonna do something about it, all right? That's number one. For your situation, what Jim is saying is accurate. We give him a lot of discretion. He has a lot of discretion when he goes out to try to work with, hold on, to try to work with residents, to try to help them get into compliance. That is absolutely something that we want. We want our township to work with the residents to try to help them to fix the situation. We don't want to issue violations. We don't want to take people to court. Like, that's, that's not how we want to manage the, the community.
Okay.
I will say this though, in, in fair deference to you, it's been a long time. And I understand that-
Two years.
I hear you. And so I think we will talk afterward, but I think what Ms. Payne has indicated, and we'll talk to Mr. Ennis, it's time to put some timetable on this to come into compliance or we're gonna have to do something. But we want to give him the opportunity to fix it.
Why wasn't I given the opportunity? Why was I given a violation immediately?
I didn't give you the violation.
Because it's at his discretion.
I don't think Jim gave you the violation. I don't think Jim gave you the violation and we certainly didn't give you the violation. I can't answer that question. I, I understand the frustration that it should be equal across the board. I get it. I, I agree with you. I will say this though, one violation and another violation are not necessarily equal. I mean, they're, they're not.
But the rules are the rules.
They are.
They are. You can't, you cannot do that. You cannot say what is good for one neighbor and, and make me get rid of my pets I had for 20 years, for an example. And let another, I could, I could name at least in 10 other residents in the gates alone that have chickens. I wouldn't do it, but I could.
I know. We know people have chickens too.
Absolutely.
I hear you.
And it was done, it was vindictively done to me because he got spanked for his violations. So let's turn her in. And that's exactly what went down. But I wasn't given a notice. I was given a violation. 30 days to comply.
I hear you. I didn't give you the violation. Jim didn't give you the violation.
My question is the variance though. There was never variances pulled for that driveway expansion. I don't care if it was in 2019. When, when you had a thing, she had to pay $800 for a shed that was put on her property before she even moved in it. Like, why is it at the discretion? It should be what's good for one is good for the other.
The short answer is that residents all the time do things without pulling permits, without getting zoning relief. They do things they're not supposed to do.
I didn't live there when it was done.
I'm just saying, and so sometimes when Jim is alerted to these things, he tries to work with the residents to see if the, the situation can be reconciled in some way.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate your answers.
I don't know why you got a violation for the chickens without any opportunity. I, I don't. And, and, but please understand that, again, one violation is not the same as the other.
I know, but you do have to understand that I'm not gonna idly sit by and let that happen to me.
Don't. I'm not telling you to sit by. I'm not.
Yeah, I won't.
Listen, you want to come to every one of these meetings? You asked where you should go. This is where you should be. You should be here at this meeting doing what you're doing right now.
And I will be. Like, I, like, I promised I will be at every meeting until this is resolved.
If you come back in a month from now and nothing has changed, then you should come back and, and tell us that I-
I don't have faith that it will be, but thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, give us a shot.
Thank you.
Can the chief address what I said about the neighbor's girlfriend now showing up and yet they, no one will show up for the video? Yeah, the chief of police?
We, I mean, I don't really want to get into private criminal matters at a public board of supervisors meeting. I mean, I, I can tell you-
He threatened a township police officer on my video camera.
I hear you, but that's not really-
No, you guys run the township, right? Does the police department not answer to you?
The chief can come up and talk if he wants to, but I don't know that-
I would just like to know why no one, I called the police and asked them to come back and get the video, which they asked me to do. Oh, I know he's coming. But nothing has been done. Hi.
Hi.
So she, Marion, no Wiki, you guys, tell me when I call the number, you guys know who she is. Because even her ex-husband, who's three times my size, has a PFA against her. So she's showing up in my driveway, which is trespassing. She's threatening to kill a township police officer, which should be of great concern to you all. And threatening us.
All right, you're, all right.
I'm just curious why-
Okay. All right, let me, let me address Kaia. You can come on up and I'll address you if you come up here.
Yeah, she stopped at her house as well.
I don't like screaming, I don't like screaming from the audience.
No, I understand.
All right, so your incident, I, I don't know about firsthand, okay? So what I would like you to do, you don't have to do it, but what I would like you to do is call me tomorrow so I can look it up and I could get some background and research on it.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be very difficult for me to talk about it here in front of the board without knowing all the details about it.
No, I, I totally understand.
And if you call me, I will address it. You have my word. You have my word.
Okay.
Because I, I address things. I don't let things linger and I don't ignore things. That's something I don't do. If you call me and give me the details, I will address it.
Okay.
Okay?
That's, that's what I would like. Unlike before something happens.
Yep, you do have it here and if you call me tomorrow, I will talk to you directly, me, and we will address it.
All right, I will call you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda items. Is there a, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated on it, on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated.
I'll second. Seeing as there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, four zero. Next on the agenda is a consideration of approving ordinance 23-01 to prohibit stopping, standing, and parking on Briggs Road between Langhorne Yardley Road and Paxton Lane during certain days and hours unless otherwise permitted. Uh, Mr. Valla.
Good evening. Thank you. So as we've discussed previously, there is an issue currently across the street from Maple Point Middle School of neighbors and parents of middle school students parking along the stretch of Briggs Road between Langhorne Yardley Road and Paxton Lane, waiting for their kids to be dismissed, walking across the street, walking across Langhorne Yardley Road to where the parents are waiting so they can take them home to avoid the pickup loop. Our police department identified this as a safety concern, not only today, but with the construction planning to come to that site as well as the eventual elementary school coming to that location, we felt that it was needed to implement a no-stopping, standing, or parking that would prevent parents, you know, whether they're parked and leave their vehicle or if they're still remaining in their vehicle, they would not be able to sit there idly at all between 2:00 and 4:00 PM Monday through Friday. Parents or, excuse me, homeowners in this area would be allowed up to three parking permits that would be issued by the police department. So that way, anyone who lives in this immediate area would not be directly affected. The ordinance has written that anyone within 200 feet of Briggs Road would be eligible for the permits. That includes about 14 properties, which we identified and sent a mailer about two weeks ago. I've spoken with three of those 14 residents and they expressed no concerns. Actually, one who has a driveway on the section of Briggs Road was very grateful that this ordinance is being considered because she's had her driveway blocked on multiple occasions as she told me. And so the ordinance was advertised in the Courier Times on Sunday, February 12th. And if the board would like, this ordinance is ready for approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would accept a motion for approving ordinance 23-01. I move to enact ordinance 23-01, making Briggs Road between Langhorne Yardley Road and Paxton Lane a no-stopping, standing, or parking zone between the hours of 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM Monday through Friday unless otherwise permitted. Uh, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing as there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions?
What is the enforcement when we do one of these no-stopping? Do we, do we enforce it, you know, more, more in the next coming months, once it's first gone in? So what, what actions do we take once this goes into effect?
Sure. This listener might have to specify whether this one is effective either five or 30 days after tonight's meeting. Five days, thank you. So usually what happens is our Public Works Department will put together signage that reflects what we're passing tonight in this ordinance. They'll post it in this area. And typically in working with the police department, there is a bit of a grace period to let parents who are currently doing this, who may not know that this ordinance is going to affect, and basically a window of opportunity to say, hey, this is now in effect, you're not supposed to be parked here. Give them a chance to comply on their own before we drop the hammer on them. And then at some point, the police department will be more active in actually enforcing and issuing tickets if there's parents still causing this issue.
Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing, uh, consideration of authorizing advertisement for the 2023 ADA curb ramp program. Tyler?
Thank you. Um, so yeah, the bid documents for the 2023 ADA curb ramp program are being finalized and at this time, we would like to request authorization to bid from the board. This year's ADA ramp program continues to construct, replace, and update curb ramps as the part of the township's annual program. The township is currently focused on the Levittown area and on the screen and in your packets, you will find this map that shows the proposed ramps for 2023 as well as some of the completed ramps and other, another program that is planned for to be constructed in 2024. So this year's program is focused in the Quincy neighborhood. It's all the bubbles that are in green. There are also alternates for Frosty Hollow Road, which are towards the west side of this map and the intersection of Cobalt Ridge Drive South and Bristol Oxford Valley Road. The township's curb ramp replacement program is scheduled to be a year or two in front of the road program so that we can take care of updating the curb ramps prior to the township's paving program. In an effort to complete as many curb ramps as possible, the annual CDBG grant program has also been pursued to construct additional locations separate from the township's annual program. And those locations are shown on this map in the, the magenta color. The bid is being prepared to complete the base bid and the alternates most effectively within the township's established budget of $400,000 under the township's 2023 capital improvements program, uh, projects. And again, tonight, we are asking for authorization to advertise the bids.
Thank you. At this time, I'll accept a motion for authorizing advertisement of the 2023 ADA curb ramp program.
I make a motion to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the township's 2023 ADA curb ramp program.
Seeing as there's been a motion, is there a second? I'll second. There's been a motion and a second. Is there anyone, any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, four zero. Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing replacement of the carpet at the municipal center. Mr. Valla.
Thank you. Um, so in the 2023 capital improvement plan, we propose replacing any remaining original carpet in this building as well as some outdated furniture in this building. Some areas of this building, the carpeting has been replaced over time, including in this room. We're considering or recommending using the same vendor that did the work in this room to close out the remaining offices. There's about a half a dozen locations throughout this building. And they're a CoStarz vendor and so they would add, their cost would be about $62,340 to complete all of the carpeting replacement in this building. The $150,000 that's programmed in the budget, the remainder, which was about $87,000, would cover furniture replacements in both the building and zoning office as well as the police department.
Thank you. So at this time, I will accept a motion for replacement carpet at the municipal center.
I move to authorize replacement of carpeting of the Middletown Township Municipal Center in the amount of $62,340 and 26 cents.
Seeing as there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Next on the agenda is the quarterly financial report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. As mentioned, I will be presenting to you the quarter for 2022 revenue and expenses, a brief overview of our investment plans, and last but not least, an update on our pension plans. Please do note that the financials are unaudited. We're still working through our audit, so it's in progress. There could be a slight change in the numbers. It rarely happens, but I just wanted to let everyone know that. Okay. So overall, we did quite well compared to our budget in 2022. We came in at about 118% of our revenue target. This does include a 1 million unplanned transfer to the capital fund from our investment fund, which isn't shown here. We usually talk about investment funds separately from this. We did about 90% in total for, of, on our expenses. So that means that we came in better than planned and budgeted overall. Most of the additional revenue is driven by earned income tax, transfer taxes, a hike in interest rates that we saw towards the end of the year, and then some of our township's services such as permits and inspections and last but not least, our parking transaction fees. We also saw higher than expected revenues on the park and rec side. Both of our, both our facility rentals and our recreation program fees exceeded budget targets for the year. Amazing job to the parks and rec team for pulling that through. Expenses, as I mentioned, were far less than budgeted. Each department constantly worked to make sure that they looked at expenses and costs overall to make, and, you know, try to stay as low as possible throughout the year. This is especially commendable seeing as how high inflation was last year and still I wanted to also talk a little bit about quarter four 2022 versus quarter four 2021. Our revenue actually came in about 107% higher than the year before, if you compare apples to apples. This is mainly, again, due to earned income taxes, interest rates, and township services, service revenues being higher year over year. Our Q4 2022 actuals versus Q4 2021 expenditures came in about 3% higher than 2022, which is expected with our fixed costs such as salary and wages and is actually better than what we had planned or budgeted. Usually we look, we usually see about 3.5% as our added increase year over year, but this year we saw 3%. So that's, that's a, you know, just a really great job by everyone in, you know, keeping, looking at costs and making sure that they were, there were efficient ways to, to save while doing projects and tasks for the township. In the next couple of slides, I'll go into more details on our revenue and expenses specifically related to our general fund and our capital fund. Our general fund, as all of you know, is our primary operating fund for our day-to-day revenue and expenditures. So it usually is our focus during our yearly budget and planning process. Overall, we came in at 120%, 21% of our budget and revenue and at 104% of budget in our expenditures. Our revenue exceeded our expenditures by about 17% overall. Revenue in quarter four 2022 versus quarter four 2021 came in at about 110% above, while expenditures came in at about 105% above. The higher revenue is coming from real estate transfer taxes, which came in 608,000 better than budget, but was lower than 2021. Earned income tax came in at over 1.2 million higher than budget and then 550K higher than 2021. And is, and is actually due to higher wages of residents in, in the township. We also saw our township's services, permits, inspections, and other service increases, which was over budget by about 2.5 million, offset by other revenue sources coming in a little bit lower, and about 2.2 million over 2021. Earned income tax will though trend lower than the last couple of years. In 2023, as most of you know, Langhorne Borough and Falls Township have enacted the tax. So we, we should or will be seeing our earned income tax come down slightly over the years. We are hoping though that we still stay on budget, but we won't see these higher than usual trends. So we do have to keep watching that and make sure that, you know, we're, we're continuously looking and saving as much as we can on the cost side. We also have to talk about the permits as well. You know, 2022 was an anomaly. We had the mall land development project that came through, which brought in quite a bit of revenue on the permit side that we wouldn't usually see on a normal year. Expenditures, Ed mentioned, were about 4% higher and a lot of that was due to some of the shifts of our different departments within the funds. You know, we have DPW that were, does work all over the township and their salary and wages are dependent on where they do projects and where, where that budgeting is coming out of from a funding perspective. So sometimes that changes. It's hard to predict where things are gonna actually fall. That was one piece. Also, we had some unexpected retirements that came through, so that was some additional costs that came in for the year as well as obviously cost of material being higher from an inflation standpoint. So overall, fund-wise, we did better on the cost side, but the general fund was slightly higher. But our revenue that we got in made up for that additional cost. Our capital fund is a fund that we utilize specifically for capital activities, including projects that can receive grant funding reimbursement. Our revenue mostly consisted of a transfer from our general fund for ARPA-related projects, a transfer from our investment fund, and then RDA grant funding. This fund, as you guys know, do not, does not have fixed resources for income, so it heavily relies on grants, fund transfers, and bonds that the township may issue. That usually sits in our fund balance year over year if we don't spend it in that year. Our last bond issuance was in 2020. We had some funding left this year that was sitting in the fund balance, which we ended up spending this year as well. So we are now completely spent on the 2020 bond, which is what we needed to do within the year. Our expenses came in at almost half of what we planned on spending. A few of our higher spend projects were delayed or started later than usual. So one of them, for example, is the public works site improvement that got delayed a little bit. So it took a little bit longer to start and there's a few others. So hence the reason why we saw a cut in our expenditures. Onto our investment fund. As you know, our investment fund is a fund that accounts for funds invested from the sale of Middletown Township's water and sewer. Unfortunately, in previous quarters, we were seeing continued loss in our balance on our PFM managed account side, and that was due to market value of our portfolio trending low. There was a sharp rise in yields, which negatively impacted the returns of the investments, which in turn created lower market value. This quarter, we are finally seeing some gains and a good pickup from the rise in interest rates. I do also want to note that we did do a million, $750,000 transfer from PFM, from our money market, to our FIRE fund as well as our capital fund. So that's a part of this as well. As you can see though, in our current balance on the money market, it is at 511, 678. That is because every time a portfolio or a market maturity matures from the managed account, it'll move into the money market if they don't have an investment that makes sense at that time. So you'll see that fluctuation between the managed account and the money market on the PFM side. On our Univest money market side, as you can see, our current interest rate in quarter four 2022 was a high 4.5%. So as the market changes from an interest rate perspective, we'll continuously see that go up or down depending on that. Last but not least is our pension update. Our township offers a pension to our employees. The side, slide reflects the quarterly results for the investment slide of the pension. It does not include cash, so this is just purely investments. Like our investment fund, our pension fund did dip down to the 11.5% for non-uniform pension fund did dip, down to the 11.5% for non-uniform and 10, negative 10% for uniform in the previous quarters. But this quarter, as I mentioned in previous slide for investment slides, following trend, we are seeing some positive gains from interest earnings. We are currently seeing 4.1% on the non-uniform side and 4.6% on the uniform side. So it's, it's finally getting a little bit better. So that wraps up our quarter four 2022 financials and pension update. Before I conclude, are there any questions?
Thank you for that update. I guess, other than the earned income tax, is there anything that occurred in the fourth quarter of '22 that we should be, that would influence different decisions in our '23 budget that we need to take into consideration?
I don't think so, not at this point. I think overall, quarter four came in pretty, you know, as planned. Right now, the only thing we're seeing is earned income taxes being an issue. And of course, some of the anomalies that we had, like the permits and inspection fees and things like that, will trend to more normal levels this year. We did budget accordingly overall. So I, we don't see us going under budget, but I, we don't, we definitely don't see us going over the budget like we did this year either.
Can I just add real quick? I think the one critical issue for us right now is interest rates. As interest rates, should they continue to rise? Where they are now is not where we were when we were budgeting, right, in terms of anticipated and expected development. So we have all the things that are in the pipeline that have financing already are fine. We're seeing a little slowdown in those things that are headed toward approval, because a lot of developers are not going to be going out seeking commercial loans in this interest rate environment. So we're just gonna have to pay close attention to that. But, you know, a lot of those revenues are related to expenditures as well. So we'll just keep an eye on it.
Any other board questions? Thank you, Ms. Bendari.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll go to other business. Mr. Williams, do you have anything?
Nothing further. Thanks.
Mr. Valla?
Nothing. Thank you.
Supervisor Kane?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Supervisor Corporal?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Teoli-Coolz?
The only thing I would like to do is just really recognize and acknowledge the number of folks that came out tonight for Chief Antozeski swearing in. It was really gratifying to see all of those firefighters here in their dress blues to support the chief swearing in. And I think that the board has come a really long way in their partnership with the volunteer fire companies. So that was, that was a great thing.
Mr. Esposito?
Nothing. Thank you.
Supervisor Kezak?
I actually, I wanna, I guess, echo what Ms. Teoli-Coolz said. I was incredibly proud to see the chief sworn in tonight, because it really represents progress and the achievement of some pretty clear goals that we set out when we started this process. And so we're, we're moving in the direction that we want to move. We found the right guy for the job. We're really thrilled to have him and excited to see what he does. And so I just want to wish him good luck. And again, just acknowledge, as Ms. Teoli-Coolz did, all the members of the four volunteer fire companies and 244 who were here tonight to celebrate this event. It shows how far we've come compared to where we started.
So I just want to also thank Mr. Harris, who has served with the township, for being the interim chief. And I also want to thank Supervisors Kezak and Kane for all their really hard work to make tonight a reality. So thank you. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We adjourned.